Mr. Collin, are you ready?
Kathy, he was having technical difficulties, he's redialing or whatever.
Okay.
Marge, I like your office.
I know she loves it, she has a city view while, while working.
That's right.
Wes, we have to make sure Mr. Collin gets on.
Yes ma'am, I do understand, absolutely. Y'all ready? Hey Joey, you may want to text Wally, because I was, the, the link that I clicked that was in the email is different from the link that is on the agenda that was sent out, so I did notice that Wally was on the other one. I'll text him as well, just to let him know that he should use the link that was embedded in the agenda that was sent around.
Joey, we need to make sure that Mr. Collin gets on this meeting.
It just needed five minutes, yeah. Almost there.
We are good, Counsel. Yeah, no, I'm good. I just had a memory issue on the computer. Is that the open public meeting statement?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the First Floor Bulletin Board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's Office, and posted on the City of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call, Mr. Collin.
Yes, Counsel President, good evening ma'am. Uh, Ms. Blake? Ms. Colwell-Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Present.
Mr. Michelle?
Right.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Vaughn? Counsel President McBride?
Present.
City Clerk, present, Mr. Cologe.
Present.
Mr. Cruz?
Present, sir. Good afternoon. Good evening, I mean.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Cherry?
I'm present, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Liston.
I'm present.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Bridges?
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Douglas?
Present, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Daniels? Dr. Lopez?
Good evening, I'm present.
Good evening, ma'am. Mr. Rannitieri? Ms. Richardson?
Mr. Clerk, I am here.
Oh, very good.
My apologies.
No worries, sir. Mr. Rannitieri, any chance that you are here? Let me check the roll. Mr. Ms. Richardson? Mr. Lavenberg?
Present.
Director Zelinski?
Present.
Counsel President, the Director's been called, there's a forum with the Council, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, go right ahead.
Counsel President, in lieu of the invocation this evening, I was hoping to read a proclamation to a former Counsel President who we lost recently, Mr. John R. Cipriano. Would I have your indulgence to do that in lieu of the, uh...
Yes.
Um, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, in lieu of the invocation tonight, we're going to ask the Almighty to remember John R. Cipriano, who was a Council Member for the Trenton City Council for seven terms between 1970 and 2002, including two terms as the Council President. Counsel President, give me the indulgence to read the proclamation in his honor and for the record. Proclamation in the City of Trenton, New Jersey in memoriam of John R. Cipriano Jr. Whereas John R. Cipriano Jr. passed away from this life on September 25th, 2021. And whereas Councilman Cipriano served honorably on the Trenton City Council for seven terms between 1970 and 2002, including two terms as the Council President, end. Whereas Mr. Cipriano, in addition to his public services as Councilman and Council President, was a Navy and Korean War veteran and a public servant to the Department of Labor and Industry. Whereas John R. Cipriano was a Trenton resident for 87 years, a graduate of Trenton High and Rider College, and had dedicated the better portion of his life to public service, including many years to the City of Trenton directly and the Trenton City Council. Whereas this Council has lost one of its own. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Trenton, its deepest sorrow for the loss of John R. Cipriano Jr., and it further extols its deepest condolences to the Cipriano family and to the friends of Counsel President Cipriano, who will most, and we will most note the substantial silence at the net docket left by the loss of one of our fellow Council Presidents. Godspeed and eternal rest, to Trenton City Council.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. If we could all rise for the PAG salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Counsel President, would you like me to proceed on the agenda and docket?
Yes, Mr. Collin, can you, um... Just go ahead, yes. Tonight, we're just going to be voting. All the conversation and questions and answers, I think there's a couple answered questions that came through, and, uh... If the, uh, Council is satisfied with the answers that they received, tonight will just be a vote. We will just be casting out vote, because Tuesday was the conference evening. Thank you, Mr. Collin.
Yes ma'am. Counsel President, first on the docket, we have minutes for approval since September 17th, 2020. That was the 10-hour meeting. And they were 23 pages. I did not receive any comments from any Council people, any correction or updates, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm...
Colwell-Wilson, I'm second by Counsel President McBride. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered, the minutes are approved. Any typographical errors will be corrected, but I did find one today. Counsel President, next we have, I believe there were 17 ones. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if you can take the time to mute your devices, so as not to interrupt with the Council proceeding, we greatly appreciate it. If you're on a smart device, please use the little microphone. If you are on a, um, if you are on a landline, please dial *6 to mute yourself and *6 to unmute yourself. Thank you very much. Counsel President, there are eighteen petitions on the docket.
Mr. Collin? Mr. Collin, it's Councilman Blakely.
I've marked you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm just looking for the other, the other background. Thank you very much. There are eighteen communications and petitions on for tonight's docket for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the communications and petitions?
So...
Motion by Counsel President McBride, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Colwell-Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
So...
Aye.
Aye.
If IT can find the background noise, we're getting a lot, there it is, I got it. Counsel President, we have two ordinances for second reading public hearing tonight. Would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
I do have a note to the administration. I did receive a note from somebody with regard to ordinance 21-20. It was indicated to me that there were lots that were supposed to be in this ordinance that were not actually included, and I didn't know if the administration wanted to make an amendment or just proceed as is.
Well, for one thing, they can't add it once it's, once, uh, it has been advertised as is, unless it is amended now.
Adam?
Sir, can you repeat the, uh, the number of the ordinance?
Yeah, it's 21-20. Uh, I believe the entity that this is for called and said that it was supposed to include Lot 15 in addition to 16 and 7.
So this violent crime has somehow, again, I think, I think it might be...
Mr. Collin, I would refer to Director Daniels. He was in communication with John Segal from my office.
Sure.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening. To the best of my knowledge, this ordinance predates me. But what I have been told is the, the only thing really significant in ordinance 21-020 is the fifth whereas. Whereas this amendment seeks to allow cultural facilities and accessory parking as a permitted use within the redevelopment plan and provides a definition of those uses. I would also add that at this time, I understand that there may have been, there may have been an agreement with my predecessor allowing for a parking lot which use has yet to be demonstrated. That's part of a future conversation to the best that I have been apprised of. But this ordinance as it sits right now is ripe. And again, I would bring your attention to the fifth whereas, and this, the difference between the last and this is just simply amending to allow cultural facilities within the redevelopment zone.
Yeah, and I just, and the only reason why I asked the question is because the entity called over and they indicated that Lot 15 was supposed to be included in the ordinance, and I didn't hear anything back, so I just wanted to make sure that we were right before we proceeded.
Yeah, Mr. Clerk, I haven't been able to find anything that was otherwise memorialized or advanced to the point that it was more than just perhaps a discussion.
And, and, and once again, Mr. Ward, just, Mr. Ward called over to my office and asked me why that particular lot wasn't in there, and I actually directed him back to your offices. So if you guys have taken care of, we're ready to proceed, that's all I need.
I'll be in touch with the gentleman tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Counsel President, we have the public hearing, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
I now declare open to public hearing for ordinance 21-020. *9, a *9 to raise or unraise your hand as the case may be. And, um, and we will be recognizing you by the Trenton City Council for speaking at the public portion. Does anyone wish to be recognized for a public portion? Counsel President, we don't appear to have anybody who wishes to be recognized in public portion.
Or you may close the public portion.
Uh, I have motion by Counsel President McBride to close the public portion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Colwell-Wilson. All in favor? I'll note the arrival of Ms. Vaughn.
Second.
I already have that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, public portion, the hearing is closed. Counsel President, floor is open.
If there's no one on the Council that would like to speak to this ordinance,
Somebody has their hand up. I see somebody's hand up.
Can't hear any, I can't hear any. Yeah, that did, that did come out late. Counsel President, do you want to indulge the hand from 6486?
The public portion is closed. You may continue with the Council members.
Yes ma'am. Anybody wish to be heard by the Counsel President?
If there's no Council member that would like to be heard, you may continue, Mr. Collin.
Yes ma'am, this is the second reading public hearing, the public hearing has been closed. Uh... My apology. And I'll call the roll. Blakely? This is for a docket, sir.
He is muted.
Keep it moving, Mr. Collin. Because I'm, I'm just not, um...
Yes!
...tolerate members of the body getting on and getting off this meeting.
Ms. Colwell-Wilson? Ms. Colwell-Wilson, your vote, ma'am?
Marge, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Collin, I'm voting yes.
I, I got your vote, sir, thank you. Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm sorry, because I joined late, I don't know which ordinance this is.
Yes, ma'am, this is...
Ward.
This is a stick. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, the answer is yes. Thank you, thank you, Counsel President.
Counsel President McBride?
Yes.
So ordered, the ordinance is adopted by 7-0, will be published according to law. I now declare open to public hearing on ordinance 21-022. Ladies and gentlemen, do you have anybody who wishes to speak? Your ordinance be heard on ordinance 21...
Did you put the ordinance on the screen, Mr. Collin, please?
Yes, sorry. This is an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified as a city tax map. This is an ordinance authorizing the sale of a city-owned property identified in the city tax map as 6969 aft Bond Street, Block 8403, Lots 65 and 66 pursuant to NJSA 40 Cap A, 12-13 B5 to Manor International Corporation for the sum of $9,000. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, do I have yet, do I have a motion for the introduction?
Don't move.
A second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrison. Public hearing is open, Count. Ladies and gentlemen, do you wish to be heard? I have one from 6486, I don't know if that was from the last one. Counsel President, would you... The party from 6486, will you unmute yourself? Is this for the public hearing on 21-022?
Councilwoman?
No, it's not a councilwoman, it's actually a private citizen has their hand up for the public hearing. Yeah, does anybody else wish to be heard? I have, uh, does anybody else wish to be heard for ordinance 21-020? Counsel President, seeing none, would you like to close public portion?
Yes.
A motion to close public portion by Counsel President McBride, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Colwell-Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, public portion is closed. Counsel President, would you like to open the floor to the body?
Yes. I, I had a question for Northwood Councilwoman. Councilwoman, have you been out and looked at this, and looked at this lot to see where it was, where it's located at exactly on Bond Street?
And, and they're small lots.
I know, but there's about, uh, there's about, uh... When they say small, I'm just trying to picture where this could be at, because across the street from, uh, Lots 65 and 66, is that in the beginning of the street or the end of the street?
I'm not sure, but the lots weren't numbered. But maybe Mr. Daniels or somebody can answer that.
Is there, is there a map of where this is located at on Bond Street? Is it, is it as you come in Bond or as you're leaving? Mr. Daniels?
Counsel President, I don't have that information on me at the moment. If you give me a moment, I can seek to gain it, to answer to that question.
Okay, because I was, uh, I was, um, I was concerned about when they say a small lot, because the lots that's coming into Bond Street are two huge lots, and they're worth, they're worth triple the amount of 9,000, and I, I needed to know exactly where this lot was, because the lot going out of Bond Street, they're small lots, uh, at the top of Bond, um, but the one...
I don't believe Counsel President, it's those large lots of the Brunswick.
Right. Counsel President, you were... Go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get, um, a visual on this lot, because as I was stating, when you come into Bond Street, there's, um, there's where this guy had this U-Haul at, that lot is huge. It's not a small lot. And so I needed to know whether it was coming into Bond Street or whether this lot was going on when you're leaving out. Because when you're leaving out of Bond Street to your right-hand side, there were two homes that were taken down, and those two lots are small lots, the lot...
These are, Counsel President, they are next to, to homes. It's not those large lots. It's the lots next to the homes. They're under, they're small lots.
I, I need to see that.
But it's not, not large lot you're talking about.
Well, there's two large, uh, there's two huge lots on the street. One of them is...
No, these are, these are both small next to homes.
I need to see that, Councilwoman, that's what I was asking. I, I need a visual here. So I need to make sure that they're not selling a lot that's worth triple the amount, uh, 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 for this price. So I need a visual. It should have been attached to the, uh... It should have been attached.
Uh, Counsel President?
Yes.
Um, are you going to meet a floor?
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes, so is there an appraisal, for Mr. Daniels, the Housing Economic Director, is there an appraisal associated with this property?
Ma'am, I don't... Go ahead, yes. How did we come to that number of 9,000?
Ma'am, I don't have that answer in front of me at, at the time. Um, I, only thing I can, I can say is that we probably did get some sort of estimate to appraise it at 9,000. Um, I would concur with Council Vice President Marge Wilson that these are undersized lots pursuant to NJSA 48, 12, 13 subsections B5. You know, we have the statutory authority to sell these undersized lots. Um, vacant, city-owned, I might add. Particularly when the properties are contiguous to, um, an owner that already lives on that block. Um, Counsel President, what I did do is quickly pulled up the address, 65 and 66 Bond Street via my mobile device, and that, those parcels actually do come up on Google Maps. Ma'am, so while I wish I had something better or more technical certified from my department, that may help you a little bit.
Yeah, so, um, uh, so, uh, it's Councilwoman Vaughn that asked a question regarding the appraisal and how did you come to the, the value to sell at, um, is it, I'm sorry, 9,000, is it?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. So, um, now I will ask the Law Director, right, who signed off on this. So, um, is Wes Bridges on the line?
Mr. Bridges?
Yes.
So, Mr. Bridges, you signed off on this ordinance?
Yes.
So there's not a map attached to it, and I just asked the Law Direct, I mean, the Housing Economic Development Director, was there an appraisal done on the property? And how did that number, uh, uh, the assessed value and, you know, the sale price, how do we come at, come to that number? So, um, did you not require any of those documents legally? Shouldn't all public property sold, uh, to anyone, uh, have an appraisal done first, sir?
I, I think that, I think that's a good idea. Again, you have to understand the reason for the signing off from, by my signature. I'm not talking about policy, I'm not talking about business decisions. When I'm looking at a document and signing off as a form of legality and form of substance, I'm just asking, I'm saying it's legal. The transaction is legal. Whether or not the transaction is fair, that's to be determined by, you know, the market, that's to be determined by the terms of the contract. So yes, I did sign off this as, as the form of legality and, and for that reason, but in terms of wire or the, the number that comes to, comes about with that, that's not what I'm signing off for.
No, I'm asking, should this contract, sale of public property should have an appraisal?
I mean, I would, I would recommend that any sale of any property have an appraisal, agreed. We, we dealt with this some time ago when I was outside Council, when there was a potential sale of a, of a much larger scale building in a redevelopment zone, and we took the time at your request, if I'm not mistaken, to go out and have an outside company do an appraisal of that company. So yes, I would always recommend there be an appraisal. But as to, with respect to whether this is proper as the form of legality, it is, but we should always get an appraisal when we're selling a property.
Yeah, and having said that, um...
Counselwoman Vaughn?
Yes, yes, sir.
If I could, um, ma'am, and, and once again, I apologize. If I could direct you on ordinance 21-022 to the fifth whereas, based upon negotiations between purchaser and the city, the parties arrived at an agreed-upon purchase price of 9,000, $9,000, which was supported by an independent appraisal conducted by Godex Appraisal Services LLC. The city deems the offer reasonable based upon the size, location, and condition of the parcels. I would also add, ma'am, that these lots are on Bond Street, obviously. Um, one is actually behind the other and is landlocked, deeming it necessary that they be sold together.
Yeah, so $9,000 seems awful low. I mean, I appreciate that it's probably bladed and boarded up and et cetera, but land is land. Okay? Land is land. Without a... Land is land. Without a building on it, land is valuable. And I don't think, I, I, I mean, I don't know who this appraiser is. Um, it, it, are, are they a in-house appraiser? I mean, who are they? Are they retained appraiser firm? How do we, how do we land with this, uh, 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 firm?
Ma'am, I can get you that answer. I don't have that answer in front of me at the, at present time, um.
Well, it would be good if we can get the appraisal attached to these sales.
Understood.
I remember, um, as, as Mr. Bridges, um, his commentary stated, that before, I mean, the council would receive appraisals that was done on public property, publicly owned property. Uh, because this is taxpayer-owned property. And when we come up to sell the property, we should be able to show the public in our public meetings, the supporting documentation. And I don't know anybody who owns a home and they go to sell or buy, they would want their, a copy of their appraisal. So, um- Pardon me?
It's vacant property.
It's vacant property, but it's land.
There's no notes on it.
I know, but it's land. The value is the land, right? So when you talk about property, you have the property assessed value and you have the land assessed value. Is, is that right, um, uh, uh, Director, um, Daniels?
That's correct, ma'am.
Yeah, so, so just because the house isn't on, doesn't make the asset less valuable, uh, Vice President Caldwell Wilson, okay? So actually, I would think the land is the most valuable piece when there's a building on it personally, right? So, um, so I would like to see how that company came to that, you know, I would like to see the, um, so, Mr. Bridges, would you have the, the document of the assess, the appraisal? Or, Mr. Daniels, do you have that available for the council, maybe tomorrow or as soon as possible?
Yes, ma'am. I'll take care. I'll, I will have that.
Yeah, and you can get that over to the, the clerk so he can, uh, you know, socialize it across the council membership, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. I have a question. President McBride, do I have the floor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So just to be clear, uh, we are selling this property to, uh, the person whose property is adjacent to, uh, this vacant land. Hello? That's a question to the administration.
That's correct, sir. Yes.
Okay, so, so how long has this property been vacant? Was there an abandoned property on it and then it was torn down? Or it's been vacant, you know, it's just been a vacant property for years?
From what I understand, it's been a br, a vacant property for some time. However, I cannot specify the time period, sir.
Okay, so why, why do we do, and just, and this is for, uh, folks to understand, uh, why we are doing this? Because it seems quite sensible, uh, to me. Why would we give this land, uh, to someone who's adjacent to it? Why? Why would we do that? That's a question. It's a rhetorical question, but I'd like you to answer it.
Why would we?
Yeah, why would we? Generally, why would we sell property to someone who lives next door that is city-owned? But, you know, why are we doing this? Is it something that we historically do? Now, I know the answer to this, but I would like the public to actually understand that there's nothing, you know, nefarious or there's nothing, you know, generally, we do this particularly when there are, there's property that is not necessarily, uh, you know, it's not something that is a hot property. It's not like it's something where, you know, folks are really interested in purchasing. But we give it to a resident who is a homeowner for what rationale? Why aren't we selling this to someone else?
Sir, sir, I would simply, I, I would simply, uh, suggest that this property has been vacant. It's an undersized lot. Uh, one of the properties that's behind the front property is landlocked, uh, which almost essentially makes it impossible to, to bifurcate them. Um, and it just makes good sense that if we have a, a landowner or a homeowner, um, from a contiguous standpoint, that is willing to develop an undersized lot, from an economic development perspective, I, I, I think it bodes well for the city. Particularly when we're trying to revitalize, uh, areas that would ordinarily be considered blight.
So, so who would actually, once it's given to the person who is, you know, lives next door, they would be responsible for actually maintaining it, cleaning it, all that jazz, right?
That's correct, sir. I, I, I would also add, when, when we use the vernacular to give, we're not giving here. There is going to be an exchange based on, um, an, uh, an, the appraisal of, uh, nine thousand dollars. Um, so two things that we're going to do from, from my office is, one, uh, certify who Godec is, um, and, and two, um, attach the appraisal.
Okay, so that's fair enough. It seems that this is sensible. You know, we are selling this to a Trenton resident. We're removing the obligation from the city to fix and maintain this property. It's a win-win on all sides in my, uh, perspective, and I'll be voting for it. Thank you very much.
Uh, uh, okay, so, um, Mr. Douglas, I see that, uh, Paul has put this on the screen. And let me tell you why this is important. Because this, the, the lot that you said is a small lot, which is sixty, sixty-five, if you could look at the lot, it's nothing small about that lot. And the second thing is that the, um, that, that's a lot of land over there. That is in the, um, there were approximately, uh, 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 I believe a couple of houses in there. But right there where that garage is at, where you see that, uh, little dumpster, that tenant there that lives there, we have had so many issues with these individuals on that corner. They park their vehicle there. You see the U-Haul in back of the van? That van is normally parked there and it's loaded with debris for months on end. Uh, Council, Council Vice Chair knows this better than anyone. Because we have tried to get this individual to clean up his property and to clean up those U-Hauls. And then now to say that you're selling more property to him at this value is a little perplexing to me. But also because the tenant, the actual individual, has caused the city so much grief from all the other neighbors that's on the street because they will not move the debris off that corner. And so, uh-
Council President?
I, I can't, I will not be voting against for this because the, the, the lot is a big lot. The person that's trying to purchase that lot on sixty-five is a problem tenant. We have had extremely, uh, 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 confront, take confrontations with him. Um, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson has been called out numerous times.
Yeah, I would like to speak on that, Council President.
Yes, but you can, and, but I'm just saying that, that, the, the person that they're selling the lot to is a problem tenant. And the, um, the, the young lady that lives there that constantly calls the city every day, ten times a day, for this individual, and the lot is not a single lot. If you pull that picture back up on the screen, that is one of the biggest lots on that street. Uh, that lot and the lot across from twenty-eight Bond are the two largest lots, uh, uh, parcels of land on Bond Street. And nine thousand dollars is just way, way under marketed price for that land.
So, Council President, if I may?
Go right ahead.
And, and you're, you are absolutely correct. I have spent more time, um, dealing with this gentleman than I care to. At times, I've had to go out there and I caught him out there where, um, I had to call the police. I had to call Public Works where he had all kinds of garbage and furniture. He runs out that apartment house and he clears out those apartments. And he does work in those apartments without permits. And we caught him doing work in the apartment without permits. He said he was just painting and there was pipes, there were sinks, there were, um, oh my God, stoves, everything out on that sidewalk. And I have asked the city for years to have him remove that trailer that parks, that he parks on the sidewalk. He parks his truck on the sidewalk. And I don't want the excuse that they wanted to buy this property for a loading dock. What are they going to do with all their other junk and when are they going to take care of that property? Because even as a good neighbor, you would think that they would try and keep that property next to them clean. But they can't even keep their own property clean.
President McBride? President McBride?
So, um, I'm finished. So if there's no, thank you, uh, Councilwoman, um, Caldwell Wilson. Mr. Collin, we may continue with the, uh-
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Councilman Santiago. Santiago, uh, Councilman Santiago.
Doesn't seem, uh, that doesn't seem, the owner should not, uh, doesn't seem to be a resident. He says it here to Manna International Corporation. It's an LLC, a corporation. Not a single resident. We're not talking about a person that lives there. Who knows where that, that person lives at, my dear? It's, uh, uh, looks like an outside landlord or landlord out from the outside that's using that, that place there. So I agree with, uh, uh, with Council President that we should not, uh, uh, sell this property to this, uh, landlord. If we have so many problems, the problems are going to increase now. He's going to have more room to put junk and stuff there. He's not going to bury anything there. He's going to use it to put his junk. Thank you.
President McBride?
Okay, um, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, Mr. Mr. Collin, we're gonna continue with the vote, please.
Council President, Council President, we want to speak.
President, President McBride, I would like to make a s-
Yeah, we would like to speak.
I, I, I've already yielded the floor. Are you speaking for yourself, Mr. Harrison? Would you like to speak?
No, I'm speaking, yeah, I'm speaking for me.
O- okay, go right ahead, Mr. Harrison.
Okay. First question, Mr. Daniels, were you on the meeting on Tuesday?
Yes, sir, I was.
You were. So these questions should have been asked to you on Tuesday, but they weren't. They're asked now, correct? You didn't know any about these questions on Tuesday.
That's, well, yes, sir.
Exactly. So you weren't asked them, now you know about it.
Now, 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 sir, if, if, if I could assert that, now that I do know about them, you know, what, what I would simply say is, um, what I have been, what has been certified to me is that the, this lot is under, these lots are under four thousand square feet. Um, I can, since this is the first reading of the ordinance, uh, I can go out there tomorrow, um, with, with, uh, with my inspectors to certify the actual size of the lot, to make sure that it is, in fact, in conformity. Um, we can actually clear up, uh, from just our perspective of doing our due diligence, any, and, uh, rectify some of the nuisance issues that are up there, out there. Um, while we can argue whether the, the price is, um, where it should be, um, for these parcels or not. Uh, and, you know, I'm gonna certify whether, in fact, the price is where it's supposed to be. I would remind council that, at the same time, we're getting rid of a piece of property that, A, we don't, no longer have to maintain, and, two, we're putting back on the tax roll. And, and many instances, one could look at this, uh, from the perspective of it's a win-win situation. Uh, now, notwithstanding the fact that, uh, Council Vice Chair, uh, if, if in fact this gentleman or, you know, the, the neighbor is a nuisance, as, as has been asserted by Council, uh, President and Council, uh, Vice Chair, um, then there are remedies.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Daniels. Mr. Daniels? Uh, just, Mr. Harrison, just one second. This is not the introduction. This is actually the public hearing in a talk session. So in order to actually get more time for another reading, you can actually adjourn the consideration of this to a later date, if you wanted more time. Just, just a point of clarification. Thank you.
I would like to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not finished. Mr. Daniels, um, by selling this lot, we would get that, that lot back on the tax, the tax roll. And if the homeowner starts piling stuff up on that lot, we can have inspectors out there and find them. Right now, if it's a lot, the city has to go out there and clean the lot, correct?
That's correct.
Exactly. So not only are we selling the lot, right, we're selling the lot, but naturally, the city now doesn't have to maintain it if it's being sold by somebody else. If it's not, somebody else could dump in that lot, then the city's got to go out there, cut the grass and remove whatever's being illegally dumped.
That's right.
As I said, second, it's a second reading. We had a meeting on Tuesday that could have been brought up, the questions, but they weren't being brought up Tuesday. They're being brought now.
I do have a mo-
So, um, so, Mr. Mr. Collin?
Yes, ma'am, I do have a motion to adjourn consideration to a later date by Ms. Caldwell Wilson.
That, that's by, uh-
I second it.
I have a second by Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, this is to adjourn, madam, to the next meeting?
Yes.
I have a motion to adjourn this consideration into, uh, the meeting of, uh, it would be the meeting set of October nineteenth and October twenty-first. Uh, second by Mr. Rodriguez. And now call the roll, Mr. Blakely. This is to adjourn the consideration to the next day.
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes up.
By the way, I am, I am being kicked off. I've been kicked off twice. And, you know, the mute button is not working. I don't know what's going on. But, uh, you know, I just wanted to, uh, bring that to, uh, text attention.
I will have IT, uh, message you directly on your device. Uh, if Mr. Rivera or Ms. Andalou, uh, could, uh, Andalou could, uh, could message Mr. Blakely to try to, to work with him. Uh, he also has his council cell phone with him. Uh, it's six oh nine five oh eight two nine nine eight. That's a public number. So, uh, that's Mr. Blake's cell phone. If you could reach out to him to help him, and now continue with the roll. Uh, this is to, uh, table, essentially lay on the table until the next meeting. Uh, Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Okay, so the resolution, or I'm sorry, the ordinance has been laid on the table to the next meeting. Uh, and that would be October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Council President, would you like me to receive the process?
Yes, please.
First, we have resolutions, uh, from the City Clerk's office. One, we have Resolution twenty-one dash four thirty-three, a resolution requesting the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation and the County Mercer pedestrian bridge at the intersection of Route one twenty-nine and Leilor Street in the city of Trenton. Uh, there was an, uh, there was a, um, a correction sent to me, uh, with regard to this resolution. I would have to read it into the record because it is a material change. Council President, can I have your indulgence to do that?
Definitely.
Uh, this is, uh, also, the material changes for the benefit of the public, uh, was that, uh, the, the resolution came out with a typographical ever in it indicating with Route twenty-nine, um, and the, actually, it is Route one twenty-nine and Leilor, for which they are seeking the pedestrian bridge. That was just on Tuesday, to construct a pedestrian bridge at the intersection of Route one twenty-nine and Leilor Street in the city of Trenton. Whereas, the intersection of Route one twenty-nine and Leilor Street in the city of Trenton has shown to be one of the state's most dangerous intersections as a site of numerous accidents and fatalities, including one within the past several weeks. And whereas, despite the clearly established history of vehicular and pedestrian accidents at said location, including the death of a crossing guard, neither the state of New Jersey with jurisdiction over Route one twenty-nine, nor the county of Mercer with jurisdiction over Leilor Street have taken any meaningful action to remediate the ongoing dangers posed. And whereas, the presence of a senior city, senior citizen housing project, a school and a mall in the immediate area generate a high degree of pedestrian traffic by senior citizens and children who are particularly susceptible to death or injury while attempting to cross this intersection. And whereas, the construction of a pedestrian bridge would significantly alleviate the dangers currently existing and protect the citizenry from the same. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Trenton, the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation, and the Mercer County Board of Commissioners, being hereby our urge to forthwith undertake a collaborative effort to study, design, and construct a pedestrian bridge over the aforesaid intersections for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. And be further resolved that a duly executed copy of this resolution be forwarded by the City Clerk to the Commissioner of the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation and the Chairperson of the Mercer County Board of County Commissioners for their immediate attention and action as aforesaid. Uh, this is Mr. Rodriguez's read resolution. I have an introduction by Mr. Rodriguez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson. Floor is open. I have a second by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, floor is open.
Uh, Madam President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
This, uh, yes, the Department of Transportation, the State Department of Transportation said that they couldn't construct that bridge there. Yes, they did that, but they didn't suggest any other action. What I want with this resolution is to bring it to them.
I can't hear, I can't hear, somebody is, there's a lot of interference. Mr. Collins?
Can I speak now?
Yep.
Okay, uh, I wanted to go back to the Department of Transportation and the County Department of Transportation so they could come up with a resolution to that problem. Uh, they order, uh, supposedly they placed a camera there, but three weeks ago, when they killed a young person there, uh, they said that the camera was not working. Also, they could lower the speed limit just in that section there of one twenty-nine to avoid speeding. Because, you know, the problem is that, uh, one twenty-nine there comes from, uh, one ninety-five and it's a, a highway up to there, and there's a little curve. Some cars slow down, some don't, once they face Leilor Street, the light, they speed up again. You know, and whoever is on the way, they don't care. They, they say that they don't see, uh, so we should, uh, if they are not going to construct their, uh, the bridge, they should come up with an alternative way to solve this situation, because this is not new. This is have been going on since they constructed one twenty-nine. Evidently, where the engineers at the beginning, they, they didn't do a study on that neighborhood. They just imposed one twenty-nine on our South Ward residence. The one twenty-nine, as a matter of fact, does not help Trentonians at all. This, uh, uh, project was built to benefit state workers that work in Trenton to make it easier for them to get in, get in and out of Trenton without having to go through South Broad Street or Greenwood Avenue or Hamilton Avenue, one of the slow routes, which at that time, there were businesses that were benefiting out of that traffic because people used to slow down, uh, to drive by Broad Street. I remember by the administration building, the state workers used to hang around there. And I believe it was swimming, the, the, a bar there by, uh, six forty South Broad Street because they had to drive to Broad Street. But to, to make it easy for state workers to get home without having to go through, uh, 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 a town, they, that's why, that was the reason they built one twenty-nine. But they didn't take into consideration the residents that had to go from one side, uh, uh, to the other, especially in that area. There's problems with the, the others, two or three of them, but this is the worst one because where the Stockley, Stockley Company used to be at, is a senior citizen, uh, uh, resident, residential there now. Across from the street, right there on Stockley Avenue, there's not school. And there are children that have to come from the other side of one twenty-nine towards the, uh, the, the supermarket to come to the schools. Also, the, in order for the senior citizens to shut, they have to cross that, uh, one twenty-nine towards the Leilor Market. Leilor Market is there, the, there's a few businesses and more there. Now, if, 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 you, you are familiar with it, but I'm very familiar with it, uh, and, uh, a couple of years ago, it, a security, the security guard, there was a, a, an older person there for years. He was a security guard, he used to cross the senior citizens. Uh, he tried to signal a, 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 a person that he couldn't turn there, and, uh, he got run over, got killed. That was a few years ago, that was in the papers. I believe everybody in council to have, uh, read that, you know, uh, I believe the county and the state are responsible to solve that situation. If they are going to dig a toner or whatever they are going to do, or have a helicopter, uh, to, uh, uh, for, for people to go by, that's their problem. But they, that was a, an irresponsible construction and our lives in Trenton County. Our lives at stake there, children's life, senior citizens' lives. It's not, uh, I'm not imagining this situation, it's happening. It has been happening since they opened, uh, uh, the Route one twenty-nine. So, uh, the reason for me to, uh, ask for a bridge is for this case to go back to the Department of Transportation, to the county, so that we could have a resolution. Otherwise, the residents of Trenton should block one twenty-nine. Thank you.
Continue, uh, uh, with the, uh, with the vote.
Yes, Council President, I have a, uh, motion by Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, do I have a second for Resolution twenty-one dash four thirty-three?
You have a second by Councilman Caldwell-Wilson.
I actually have a second by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, my apologies, I turned the page. And I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Stay.
Mr. Harrison abstains, Mr. Michelle?
Abstain.
Michelle abstain, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Collins, can you move the, can you move the consent agenda after this, uh, resolution, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Council President, can I ask a, um, a question, a housekeeping item?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Collins, um, I see that on, you know, a couple of the resolutions and ordinance, like right there, you have Rodriguez's name, the person who raised the, um, who's introducing the legislation. I know that you're very busy, but we should try to do that on a consistent basis to, um, whether the leg, piece of legislation, resolution or ordinance is introduced by someone in the administration or the council.
I can't do that because the ones that are introduced by the administration, I don't know who's going to sponsor it until the first and second is called. So I have no ability to type those resolution names in, those are called on the floor. Uh, with regards to the ones that I received from individual members as they are sponsored, as we can, yes, we do type the names in.
Because most of mine, as you know, I, I haven't, you know, that hasn't been the case. So I would hope that, uh, that that happens, Mr. Collins, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll make sure that your name is on your, um, the resolutions that you sponsor, Councilwoman.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Council President.
Council President, yes, I was gonna, I, I got, uh, we have, I believe, only three. We have resolutions for the consent agenda, we have Resolution twenty-one, four forty-seven, twenty-one dash four forty-eight, and twenty-one dash four one eight, um, twenty-one dash four one two, and twenty-one dash four one six. Or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some, uh, some, yes.
Second. I have a second by Mr. Blakely. And I'll call the roll for the consent agenda, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Um, yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved, now we'll move on to Resolution twenty-one dash four thirty-four. This is a resolution requesting the development of a flood control program by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to alleviate flooding within the city of Trenton. This is Mr. Rodriguez's resolution as well.
You may, I move to a vote.
Yes, ma'am, I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, do I have a second?
I second.
I'd like to, uh, say something before we go.
Sure, I do have a second by Council President McBride on the record, and Mr. Rodriguez is seeking the floor.
Yes, uh, Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, uh, Mr. Onitere said that there was a plan, uh, with the Army Corps of Engineers, and I got something, yeah, very, very, uh, it was very good that I got it. But what I got was an emergency, emergency mitigation plan, uh, an, an emergency mitigation plan, which was pretty good, was completed recently, uh, but that, it had nothing to do with, uh, with this resolution. It's a different issue. The mitigation plan, that is mandated, we have to that, have that plan every, uh, so many years. We have to have a mitigation plan for all emergencies. But my issue here is, uh, the Delaware River. Uh, the Delaware, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, they have the equipment, and if they accept the project, they could do it, they could dredge, dredge the river, make it a lot deeper. Because that's the problem in that part, portion of, of the Delaware. I remember I used to go fishing and I used to go swimming in that area there. And the, it, it's very shallow, you know, it's not deep enough, and everything accumulates there. So that's why we have water going into the island and the other neighborhoods. Because, uh, the, the river at that point is full of sediments from, way from up to New York. Where it's coming down and staying there. Also, by, by dredging that, that portion, our filtration plant is there. I happened to tour the filtration plant with Councilwoman Vaughn, and I, I don't know if she remembers all this slush, the, the tanks that were full of the black stuff, that's coming from the bottom of the Delaware. That's been accumulating for years, it's coming from the north and it's, uh, accumulating there. If we get that pa, portion of the Delaware dredge, make it deeper, we will clean, get rid of all the, uh, all that slush that we are filtering into our filtration plant, and that we are spending millions, millions to, 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 to filtrate it and then to send it out of the filtration plant. We have contracts, every year, e- e- every year, we have to pay thousands of dollars to take all that stuff out and dump it somewhere else. So, uh, uh, this, if we could get it, the administration had to work on this, uh, somebody had to work on it. Uh, but I believe it's needed, uh, I believe that it will save the city of Trenton millions of dollars. It will save our insurance, FEMA. Uh, FEMA is not a free, uh, givey. FEMA residents paid, uh, 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 for, that's an insurance. And sometimes you are denied, and i- i- in that area, it's hard for residents to get flood insurance in that area because it is prone, uh, uh, to flooding. It has been happening historically, historically. Uh, just a, a few weeks ago, uh, there was an emergency there, and they were telling the residents to relocate, to move out to somewhere else, uh, to a school. Uh, so we should, we have to do something about that, initiate that, apply, apply to, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers. I know that we have a relationship with the Army Corps of Engineers, especially around the, uh, Hesse Fair, that area there and that, uh, canal, they have been giving us grants to remediate the problems there with the flooding there before, because we used to have flooding there going down to Monver Street. And the Army Corps of Engineers, what they did was gave us some grants. But what I am asking for is a, a mitigation plan, something, uh, a, a study, they could do a study and decide if they accept us to have the city of Trenton. If we could get that done, we will save millions and millions of dollars, and we will, uh, uh, have a community of three or four communities that are there in West Trenton that are affected by the flooding, that they get affected every time. We have been lucky, this time around, we were lucky, because it didn't rain up there, it didn't rain in that side. If we would have rained in that side, we would have a huge flood there. Then there was reason to evacuate the, the, the island residents. Uh, what I'm trying to do with this is to avoid that, prevent it from happening, uh, because we are going to be gone, but Trenton is going to be Trenton, and there's going to be residents, uh, living in Trenton. So that's why I, I am putting this forward, uh, thank you very much.
Continue with the vote, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Council President, I have an introduction by Council President Rod, I'm sorry, Council President, Councilman Rodriguez. I have a second by Council President McBride, and I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes yes, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President, next we have Resolution twenty-one dash four thirty-five, a resolution consenting to the extension of Steve E. Wilson as acting director for the Department of Police for the city of Trenton. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. I have a second by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, floor is open. Council President, would you like me to move the vote?
Yes, please move the vote.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Council President, next we have Resolution twenty-one dash four thirty-six, a resolution exercising the option to extend the contract for an additional, excuse me, to extend the contract for an additional one-year award to Verizon, New Jersey, to provide non-voiceover internet protocol telephone services through Centrex or Centrex-like service equivalent from September twenty twenty-one to September ninth, twenty twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-eight thousand through bid twenty twenty dash twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
Some, the most.
Motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, floor is open.
Mr. Collins, would you like to vote, please?
I would like to vote. I would like to vote.
Yes, ma'am, Council President's calling for the vote, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to three. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash four thirty-seven, a resolution authorizing appropriation of two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one to provide premium hazard pay to eligible employees of the Trenton Emergency Medical Services Ten. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
President McBride?
We want to move to the vote, Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am, Council President's called for the vote, Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
I'm abstaining.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to one with one abstention. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash four thirty-eight, a resolution authorizing settlement in the civil matter of Angie Hall individually in his garden ad litem for Rayquan Harrington, an engine versus the city of Trenton, head out, do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion by Council President McBride, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Blakely, uh, this is a matter in executive session, shall I call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
So ordered, the resolution carries by a vote of seven to zero. Next we have Resolution 21-439, a resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Scott Madlinger of the city of Trenton, in total amount of $2,393, representing the city's contribution towards the settlement. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
A motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Michelle. Call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
So ordered, the resolution carries by a vote of seven to zero. Next we have Resolution 21-440, a resolution authorizing settlement in the civil matter of Alva Evans versus the city of Trenton, Al. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
A motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, I have a second by Mr. Michelle. I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
So ordered, the resolution carries by a vote of seven to zero. Next we have Resolution 21-441, a resolution authorizing settlement in the civil matter of Marathon Engineering and Environmental Services, Inc. versus the city of Trenton. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Michelle. Mr. Blakely, your votes are.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
I'm sorry, which one is this now?
This is 21-441, a resolution authorizing settlement in the civil matter of Marathon Engineering.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Abstain.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to zero with one abstention. Next we have Resolution 21-442, a resolution awarding contract through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:44, cap. A, 20.4, et sec., Merkadian, PC, for municipal watering services in an amount not to exceed $4,100 for a period of one year from August 6, 2021 to August 5, 2022 through RFP 2021-28. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I have a motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Vaughn.
Continue with the vote, please.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Which one is this?
21-442, ma'am, I'm sorry, it's trying to keep up with two things at once, let me bring it up.
Merkadian. No, 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 it says Merkadian, I got it.
And your vote, ma'am, was yes?
Yeah, my vote was yes.
Thank you, ma'am. So ordered, the resolution carries by a vote of six to one. Next we have Resolution 21-443, a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $12,500,000 aggregate total amount of water utility refunding bonds through 2021 Qualified Pursuits and Revisions of Municipal Qualified Bond Act of the law, nineteen seventy-six, Chapter 38 is amended with City Trenton and the county emergency state of New Jersey authorized by refunding bond order in tier two four, finally adopted by the city council of the city on May 7, 2020, to refund certain bonds of the city, providing form and other details with respect to the sale and issuance of said refunding bonds. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Don't move.
I have a motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison, floor. Council President, do you want me to?
Continue with the vote.
Yes, ma'am, this is Resolution 21-443, Blakely.
Yes.
Mr. Blakely votes aye, Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
I'm sorry, what is this?
This is Resolution 21-443, ma'am.
I'm sorry, what is it, though? I can't see it.
It's the bond issue, the repurpose, the re-funding of a bond.
It's a refinancing. Who put up this one? The finance director?
It, Mr. Letty, it explained on Tuesday that this saved money on the.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
So ordered, the resolution carries by a vote of seven to zero. Next we have Resolution 21-444, a resolution authoring a contract through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:44, cap. A, 20.4, et sec.
It shows that this is on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Let me just make sure if I missed it.
Change your screen, please.
Yep, I'm getting there, I got two things going on at once, hold on. And this was on the consent agenda, thank you, Mr. Blakely. Next we have Resolution 21-406. This is a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the law office of Goldenberg, Mackler, Sayier, Minz, Biker, Bonchy, and Gill to provide specialized professional legal services regarding interim tax foreclosure litigation matters through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:44, cap. A, there's 20.5, et sec., in amount not to exceed $50,000 per RFP 2021-25.
So move.
A motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Council President, would you like me to move the vote?
Yes, please move the vote.
Blake.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Abstain.
Council President McBride.
No, no vote.
That's a no vote, ma'am. Resolution carries by a vote of five to zero with one abstention. Next we have Resolution 21-407, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to IBN Construction Corporation for construction services for the neighborhood redevelopment revitalization pilot program for demolition and or stabilization of vacant abandoned structures H M F A demo funded for a period of one year from August 6, 2021 to August 5, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $170,499 and 60 cents per bid 2021-50. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Move.
So move.
I have a second. I just need the second, ma'am.
Mr. Harrison seconded.
Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
So ordered by, the resolution carries by a vote of five to two. Next we have Resolution 21-410, a resolution accepting and awarding a negotiated contract to Pool Boy Spa, Pool and Spa LLC for on-call swimming pool maintenance for five public swimming pools for a period of one year from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, in amount not to exceed $75,000. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Don't move.
This is a motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, a second? I think Mr. Harrison is a second. Floor, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
I can't see, your screen is too little, I'm trying to. Yeah, there it is, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, so this one has to have a super majority vote, correct?
That's correct.
And I'm going to vote no.
Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to two with. Next we have Resolution 21-445, a resolution awarding a contract through fair and open process in NJSA 19:44, cap. A, 20.4, et sec., Burman Architectural Association, Inc., and architectural professional engineering design for construction document preparation and construction oversight, fieldhouse concession, Stan Calhoun Street Park, New Willow Street, Trenton, New Jersey for a period of one year from October 8, 2021 to October 7, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $62,500 through RFP 2021-13. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second? Mr. Harrison, I'll take that as a second. Call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No, and the other thing that I wanted to add, I don't know how where Calhoun and New Willow Street meets because that's not an intersection. And so I'm just trying to figure out what are they talking about? Because Calhoun Street, the streets that go into Calhoun is not connected to New Willow Street. New Willow Street is off of State Street. Calhoun, New Willow Street does not go into Calhoun Street by no stretch of anybody's imagination, so what are they talking? Doesn't it go bypass North 25? North 25, North 25 is by the firehouse on. Yeah, North 25 is New Willow.
This is Calhoun right here, and this is New Willow, and this is, I guess, the park they're talking about. So this is actually, just a sec, right there, it's actually 653, ma'am, not North 25. It's County Route 653. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Next we have Resolution, um, we did call the vote on that, that's five to two. Next we have Resolution 21-446, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Earl Asphalt Company, P.O., Box 556, Farmingdale, New Jersey, 07727, for the construction of Hetzel Field parking lot for a period of one year through September 10, 2021, September 9, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $503,113 and 13 cents through bid 2021-38. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to two. Next we have Resolution 21-447, a resolution authorizing approval to apply and accept a grant application, an accepted contract to the New Jersey Department of Transportation Safe Route School Program, 2022, for the Brunswick Avenue corridor safe routes to school project. Do I have a motion?
Consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Is that a more clarification?
Oh, yes, yeah, it was consent agenda, that was consent agenda.
You are, no, I don't actually have this on the consent agenda, let me just double check.
I have this.
It is, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't write the number down in my notes, my apologies. It was on the consent agenda, so we actually already have Ms. Caldwell-Wilson as sponsor of that. I'll move on to the next document, and now I have all of the consent agenda resolution. Likewise, 21-448 is on the consent agenda, next we have Resolution 21-449. This is a resolution awarding contract through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:44, cap. A, 20.4, et sec., awarded to multiple vendors for engineering and regulatory compliance services on an as-needed basis for a period of one year from September 10, 2021 to September 9, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $800,000 through RFP 2021-32. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
So move.
A motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, Mr. Harrison, can I take that as a second?
Second.
I have, Mr. Harrison is a second, I just wanted to make sure you had the motion, ma'am.
Second, I seconded it.
I actually had you as the primary, as the introduction.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Harrison, a second. Mr. Blakely, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Councilmember Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to three, so ordered.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
I got it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next we have Resolution 21-417, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for rustling paving and concrete LLC for roadway restoration for the townships and city for the Trenton for a period of one year from September 1, 2021 to August 31, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $633,000, $633,825 through bid 2021-21.
Don't move.
A motion by Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Michelle, call the roll, Mr. Blakely. Mr. Blakely, sir? Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Mr. Blakely.
I voted already.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear your vote.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to three. Next we have Resolution 21-451, a resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Pro Cops LLC to provide armed security guard services for a period of one year from October 8, 2021 to October 27, October 7, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $253,344 through bid 2021-40. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
So move.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson, I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of six to one, so ordered. Resolution 21-418, this is on the consent agenda, next we have Resolution 21-413. Resolution exercising the option to extend the contract for an additional one-year award to green groundskeeping, for groundskeeping and maintenance services at Trenton Water Facilities from October 8, 2021 to October 7, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $40,000 through bid 2020-44.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to two, so ordered. Next we have Resolution 21-416 is on the consent agenda, so is 420. That is it for the, uh, resolutions, Council President. We do have an, uh, an ordinance for introduction, uh, and first reading for tonight. Uh, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, go right ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is an introduction and first reading for ordinance Twenty-One dash zero twenty-three. Public hearing for this ordinance will be, public hearing and second reading for this ordinance will be held on October twenty-first. Twenty twenty-one. This is ordinance Twenty-One dash zero twenty-three, ordering to amending section two dash two nine redevelopment functions.
Did you put it up on the screen?
Yes, ma'am. This is resolution, this is ordinance Twenty-One dash zero two three, an ordinance amending section two dash twenty-nine redevelopment functions, the section two dash thirty-four Division of Planning. In Article Seven, Department of Housing and Economic Development, in Chapter Two, Administration of the Go to the City Trenton. A motion by Council President McBride.
Second.
A second by Ms. Vaughn. Now call the roll.
Council President?
Yes.
Council President, may I speak?
Yes, you can.
Yes, um, um. It's, uh, it, it here again, and this is an ordinance, and I don't see the city attorney's signature on here.
The, it, it came down late, ma'am, so it, it's just a matter of, but it was signed by the city attorney.
I don't see it. I don't see a signature on here.
Okay, it's not on this particular document, because this particular document was uploaded for the convenience of the council before the document.
Okay.
From the law department, but it, once again, it was signed by Mr. Bridges as to form of legality.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. What was, was it in fact signed as the form of legality? Did, did I sign that?
I believe so. Hold on one second, but I'll show it to the.
And without, without going into too much detail, there was an email about this. Obviously, it should, this should go, uh, for a vote in normal course, but I, I believe I did send a, an email, um, to council. As well as council's council in a related matter about my opinion about this, but it should absolutely still go to a vote, um, a, as it would in ordinary course of the night. Sorry, I had to go to the part original, but that, I believe, is Mr. Bridges' signature right there.
Uh, we continue with the vote, please?
Yes.
I, I have a question on this.
Yes, go right ahead, uh.
Who's sponsoring it? I, I don't see a sponsor. I asked before, I asked what, where, where this came from, and nobody could tell me.
This came, this came from, this, uh, is, this ordinance was sponsored by myself. And it is in order for us to start doing the business of this, of the redevelopment authority. Um, and as the redevelopment authority, there has to be, um, once we, once the judge ruled in the council's favor. Um, then we had to put something in place so that procedures can be, uh, followed. And then we will move straight to a resolution after this has been adopted. But this is so that the redevelopment authority, which is the council, will be included. And we'll have a seat at the table for all redevelopment projects.
Um, I just, I, I just, I just was curious where, I, I still didn't see my signature. You said that's my signature, I still didn't see it.
Look in Mr. Collins' block.
So can we continue with the vote, please?
That's your signature, sir.
And, um, Council President, I just want to ask your comment.
Just, just interrupt one second, this was actually the product of the executive sessions, and I didn't know if you wanted to go any further into the executive sessions, this is drafted by.
No, we do not. We want to continue with the vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely?
No.
Ms. Colwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, no vote.
Mr. Rodriguez is a no vote. Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
The ordinance fails first reading and introduction by a vote of three to three. There will be no public hearing on this ordinance at this time.
All righty, is that, um, all of the, that concludes the business for today?
That does conclude the business of the city for today, ma'am.
Can you say why there's no public hearing on this?
Uh, because it, it did not pass introduction, sir.
Mister, uh, Mister, Mister Collin?
Yes, ma'am.
You're answering questions to people that are just blurting out, and you don't have the authority to do that. And they don't have the authority to just blurt out a question. Can we move straight to the, um, public comment?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, this is public comment. You have ten minutes to speak on any item. If you look to be heard, please raise your hand and be, be recognized by the city council president. Uh, Council President, first we have Mary Horn.
Yes, I just, uh, I'll be brief. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, firstly, I'd like to say, um, I, I'll just get right to the point. Five hundred thousand dollars to, uh, I, I believe this was the ordinance, uh, resolution for that, to pave the Hetzel's, uh, field? That seems a little excessive. That's a lot of money. That's a half a million dollars. I, I, I've been there. Uh, I grew up around the area. I, I, I don't see it being that large, but I, you know, it, far be for me to say, but it seems a little bit excessive. I don't know if we vetted anybody else, but that's a lot of money, a half a million dollars to pave a parking lot. And, uh, uh, the one about the pool, pool maintenance, I, I, I'm all for it getting clean, but, uh, uh, the summer doesn't start till next year. And, uh, perhaps we could find somebody for a little less than that, seventy-five thousand dollars. It may not seem a lot to some people, but it seems a little excessive to me, too, not for nothing. I, I want the pools to get cleaned, but maybe we could have looked at something, someone, uh, when it gets closer to the summer, uh, uh, to, to clean the pools. And, uh, as far as that, uh, almost a million dollars for, to, uh, patch and, 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 and do potholes. I mean, when the Rescue Act money was available, we should have been, I thought we, I, I assumed that we were going to have money to just go ahead and we had, we would have been far ahead. With patching and, and, and filling and holes. Now we're going to go and extend this over a year, and that's almost a million dollars. I think that's a little excessive. Also, we're going to extend it to the townships, too, so I, I'm thinking, uh, is, we got two different areas, but, you know, the same thing's being done. And so now we're looking at a million and a half. So, uh, just to say that, I want to look at something else, uh, Corbin, they did them with that. Uh, extending, and, and I'm not for extending the, uh, uh, the timeframe for, uh, I don't even know him, but I know there's a lot of murders and murders continue. I'm not saying if we replace people and keep, that's the answer, but there has been no answer. There has been no answer. There's a couple of kids I know. I'm not saying, well, the involved, it's not for me to say if they were on that end of being a bad part of it or to receive an end. But I know a lot of good people are getting involved in this, and, and yet we have no re- resolution for this. I, I, I don't understand, but, uh, 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 I, I don't see it. I, I, I think we, we have to do better. We have, we have to get out there and beat the street. Day and night, it doesn't matter who, uh, uh, it's not for us to say if somebody committed a crime. We, we can't, uh, do the punishment. But we have police officers, and even if we have to get some people out of their chairs in the police department, get out there and put them on the beat, too. If we don't have enough people, get everybody involved, and that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Council President, next we have Mr. Michael Renell.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, um, I'm going to keep it really brief. I'm happy that Twenty-One zero two three did not move this evening. Um, if only based on that you guys want a seat at the redevelopment table. And earlier in the meeting, I listened to you mess up the sale of a nine thousand dollar lot to a private citizen. Uh, it's not very confidence inspiring, and, um, yeah, I'll just keep it at that. Thank you very much.
Council President, next we have Kierke Casabac.
Hi, this is Pete. Sorry.
You've been recognized, so go ahead, please.
Uh, so I'm Pete Casabac, uh, I'm resident here in Trenton, and I've been involved in redevelopment policy and implementation, uh, in Trenton and also across New Jersey for the last thirty years. And I've never seen anything like this ordinance anywhere else before, so I'd be very interested in understanding if it's modeled on some other city or town. Um, and to better understand the purpose of it, because what it, the way it reads to me is that city council is looking to manage and direct the, the city's housing and economic development department. And I think there needs to be a, maybe a better understanding of the difference between, um, exercising redevelopment powers. And performing redevelopment functions. And I think the council should be exercising its powers and its authority under the redevelopment law. But it should not be exercising the functions of a redevelopment agency, um, or a department. Um, so I think that it may need to relook at the, the specific purpose that this is being introduced. And see if it can be changed to accomplish that purpose without this kind of an overreach that moves it into managing a city department and managing the functions of redevelopment. Um, because, as you all know, I mean, all development in Trenton is redevelopment. So it would mean that basically the city council is managing, um, all development in the city and all the functions of development in the city, which. Um, again, I've never seen the legislative branch do that before, and I don't think it's, um, advisable to take on that role. So I am also glad that that did not pass, and if anyone would like to, uh, I'm happy to talk to anyone about this, about, uh, my concerns or how it could be improved. So that it meets the, the desires of the council without, um, creating a precedent that is, um, sort of inexplicable. Um, so thank you very much.
Council President, next we have Kendra McCoy.
Go right ahead, Ms. McCoy.
Hello, thank you for your time. As stated, my name is Kendra McCoy. I am the Delaware River Advocate at the Watershed Institute, and first of all, I want to applaud, applaud the council for taking Trenton's flooding serious, seri- issues seriously. As a risk to both human life and economic well-being of the area. Um, I would like to encourage the council to consider, when, uh, thinking about Resolution Twenty-One dash three, four, three. Uh, consider relying on green infrastructure and best management practices, uh, for, uh, stormwater runoff. As well as consider more cooperation with upstream communities to address flooding issues. It's an unfortunate fact that many traditional flood control methods generally rely on hard infrastructure to restrict waterways and either move or delay the flooding problem. By focusing on green infrastructure, this city creates sustainable, long-term solutions that address the core of the flooding problem in Trenton. Which is a high percent of impervious cover and an inability of floodwaters to infiltrate in the soil and out of urban areas. The Watershed Institute has helped multiple municipalities and smaller communities on education and research on flooding issues. And we would like the council to consider using the Watershed Institute and its resources moving forward with flood control plans and infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Council President, that was the last speaker. I don't see anybody else for public portion.
Uh, yes.
Uh, Council President, we do have one other person, uh, two other people now. Uh, first, I believe we have Faith Anne Person.
That's correct. My question is, going over these resolutions, and I'm really getting into them. I've noticed a lot of the resolutions for, um, like, for instance, Twenty-One four thirty-six, Twenty-One four forty-two. They all have dates that are going from past dates to cover in the future. I'm curious, is it because of COVID that these are not being submitted early enough to come within? Because I've noticed that other resolutions such as Twenty-One four forty-five, forty-nine, fifty-one, they all say eight, October of this year, which is tomorrow. Go through October of next year, which I feel is a reasonable amount of time to pass an ordinance. But you have ordinances that are September, July. I'm just curious, how come these ordinance are not being brought before the city council? Uh, at least within a week or two of the expiration for renewal? I guess no one can answer that.
Uh, during, yeah, ma'am, during public portion, but you're more than welcome to call. I'll give you some contacts in, in the administration and, uh, that you can call and ask a question to them. Or via email.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you email me, clerk@trenton nj.org, I'll also forward the email.
Okay.
Council President, is there any, uh, Council President, we have Trenton Business, I believe this is Mrs. Chowdhury.
Go right ahead, Ms. Chowdhury.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Um. One thing I just wanted to sort of share with people is that, um, there, uh, this is, uh, basically having to do with, uh, police oversight and reforming policing in the capital. Um, Trenton as the capital should be taking stronger leadership in, um, becoming a model city for how policing should be, um, transacted, I suppose. Um, throughout the state, um, I think that there's been a lot of problems with policing. Um, I never heard again about the situation with Stephen Dulcie Moore, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Um, he was taken down by four police officers and he died. Um, Joseph R. uh, also died at Police Hands, and I understand there's an investigation. Um, I would like there to be more transparency, um, from the police to the residents, uh, who they're responsible to and for. Um, about what is happening with any of these cases. I'm curious to know if the police officers involved in, um, Joseph R.'s death, um, are still on the street. Um, and I would also ask that all council members and other politicians in Trenton, um, publicly share their, uh, opinions or take on the, uh, idea of a civilian review board. Um, there's been, um, an act that's been presented again and again, um, to the legislature, and I have never seen anything in Trenton about that. Um, I think that there's a strong and significant need for a civilian review board. Um, I think that, uh, police policing themselves is inherently problematic. Um, that's just kind of a sociological guideline. Um, it's, it's challenging for people to police themselves. There's a lot of temptation, and I think it's been demonstrated that it's not functioning properly. Um, so I think that there is need for a civilian review board, um, and I'm curious to know if there's, anyone has taken leadership on that. Um, and I would like to share that, um, there is a march occurring tomorrow. It's called the Long March for Justice. It is sponsored by a number of groups, including, uh, the Newark Communities for Accountable Policing, Black Lives Matter of New Jersey. Black Lives Matter Patterson, Atlantic City Chapter of the National Action Network, the Trenton Anti-Violent Coalition, or Revolution of Trenton. Um, the New Jersey Chapter of the, uh, People's Campaign, uh, for Salvation and Social Justice, the Latino Action Network, um, amongst others. Um, and of course, the, um, NWA CP. Um, so it is occurring tomorrow, Friday, uh, October eighth, uh, at eleven AM. It starts at the intersection of Bloomfield Avenue and Church Street, um, that's to Church Street in Montclair, New Jersey. Uh, if anyone would like more information, the phone number to call is nine seven three eight oh one zero 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 one. That number again is nine seven three eight zero one zero 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 one. Uh, more importantly, I, 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 I would like to know what, I would like a response from the council about what, what steps and measures are being taken, like actionable measures, real measures, not, not talk, not rhetoric. But what actionable measures are being taken to make policing safer in Trenton. Um, I won't go into anecdotal stories, but, but I could, and they're a long. Um, I, I don't understand the difference in policing that happens to different groups of people. Um, I know personally of a Caucasian woman that has a long drug history and history of fraud. She had no, uh, and criminal history and selling stolen goods and stealing and, uh, drug paraphernalia and drug use. She had no problems reporting a crime. I, the same summer, had a very hard time reporting crime and being granted any sort of credibility. Um, I don't understand the basis, well, I do understand the basis of that, and I, I think it's, um, it needs to be rectified. Um, I understand we have a new police chief, um, and, uh, or police director, rather, and I'm curious to know what initiatives are being taken. Um, and what leadership is being taken to deal with this very important issue. Uh, the crime is closely related to the drug problem, which is also related to business and how it occurs in Trenton. People are going to continue to be discouraged from participating in business in Trenton, in, in, uh, being patrons to business in Trenton. And maintaining businesses in Trenton. Trenton's going to continually have a hard time attracting business if there can't be a basic modicum of security. Um, but this is never going to happen with the police not engaging with the community, not serving the community first. But rather ki- taking more of a, almost predatory approach to the people that they are supposed to be protecting in the streets that they're supposed to be protecting. Um, I've seen it myself a number of times, I've experienced it, too. I've watched policemen turn, or police officers turn, turn their lights on, on elementary-aged children. I don't understand why they didn't simply get out of a car and talk to these children and ask them to get out of the street. I don't understand the need to, to turn lights, which would indicate an emergency or serious situation, on school-aged children. And this is not the kind of policing I think that demonstrates what good policing is about. Um, so, um, I won't take too much time tonight, but, but, but I am very curious to know why there hasn't been more leadership taken. Why has there not been more initiative? The only thing I saw change as a result of all the protests was the, uh, Trenton website, the, the policing website, and it talked about serving citizens first. But I haven't seen any more police on the street engaging with, with residents. I haven't seen any outreach to communities. I don't know who polices my neighborhood or the neighborhood where my business is. Um, I haven't heard particularly good feedback about policing, um, so I want to know what's being done in, in, in a more active manner. And that's it for tonight, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, your name, please?
Sherry Garette.
Uh, Council President, Ms. Sherry Garette.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garette.
Yes, thank you, Council President. In regards to the young lady who just spoke about the policing, I had some concerns as well since the former Director, Sheila Cody, because she, I kind of see her plan unfold with the officers, having certain areas that they had to monitor for a period of time. Since she was terminated, I noticed the plan that she implemented went with her. So, you know, I find that, because I don't see police at all. Before, in the hot areas, I used to see officers, you know, in areas where there is, you know, a lot of, you know, crime or there's been shootings. I don't see them officers at all, period, in quelling certain things before it happened. So, whatever her plan was, I think it was working. People were moving around, finding other areas, but she was implementing something and I seen something. So I don't know if the big gripe in the police department was that she was making the officers work and be accountable. I don't know what the gripe was, but to me, after she walked out of there, everything just went, I don't know, everything just, nothing's happened. You don't see nothing happening on the street. On 21434, the reservoir's requesting development of flood control. Also, I hope the U.S. Army Corps also, you know, because I brought this up before about the reservoir. There's an issue with the reservoir, and, you know, Councilman Santiago mentioned about the sludge. Again, that was my concern, because with the water, because for us to disconnect the reservoir, all of our water is going to, basically going to be dependent on the Delaware River. And with that, that means, if, that means the chemicals they were treating, we may have to use excessive chemicals. Those containers, those big containers that we placed on Prospect Street, that, even though it's filtered prior, it's hopefully filtered prior to being in that container, I'm sure it can't get every spectacle out of it, out of that water. So that water sits in there and chemicals for a long duration. I don't think it's being pushed out, pressure to keep the pressure up, so it flows through our water system, like they said, but I just keep, it just, I think we're going to have a problem. I'm hoping the U.S. Army Corps deal with the tree trunks, because that adds more issue to the water that's coming out of the Delaware River. And in regards to the flooding, I thought when we really had the first crisis under Doug Tomer, the remedy was lowering the water. So lowering the water sounds like that's going to be a problem with us supplying water supply through the city. So it just seems like this whole thing about disconnecting the reservoir, us totally dependent on the Delaware River, to me, it sounds like it really wasn't thought out fairly. On 21437, uh, my question is, where are the names of these people? And how many people are going to be paid with this $216,000? How many employees, how much is getting paid? Where's that list? Like, I just find that we be submitting these resolutions, and there's not enough information. And it's just like a free-for-all. We keep signing off blank checks. Uh, 2144, 21449 did not list intent. You know, we want to pay someone $800,000. What is the intent of the Water Department under Director Latenberg? I think when you're submitting these resolutions for these, for these, for this funding, there should be more information to the council and to the public of your intent. What's the plan? What's the action plan for you wanting to bid a contract out, or put a contract out, or pay someone on a, at needed basis? What is, what's going on with the Water Department that you need this disturbance? And what's, you know, what's happening? What are your findings? Uh, 21417, why isn't the township not contributing? You know, I, Trenton is really weird. It's really weird that we keep, okay, yes, there are customers for the water for the, for the, as race, as people who are, uh, paying for water from Trenton's system, but I'm just telling you, where corporations work, you have to pay for that. PSD and D, a utility company in certain areas, depending on what the need is, those people pay for that. You know what I'm saying? So I don't know, we're bidding over backwards and getting kicked at the same time. I just don't understand that. Uh, 21451, how many, how many, how many guards are being hired? Again, and what are their salaries for $253,000? I mean, what are we paying for? Like, I don't, I think we keep, we're spending a lot of money and there's not enough information to support the spending. That's my concern. You know, even with the budget, we're, you're submitting us these numbers, but we don't really know what the intent is for each department, for your spending, for your need, and what services that this money is going to provide to people in Trenton, per se. I don't see it. And we keep going back in the same circles, like, okay, what's being done in Trenton? We get to, we go through the same motions about, this is the process, but at the same time, we go through the process, we agree on this stuff, or we, and these bills are being passed, but where is the end result? And you can't even, you can't even call the administration to test about they're misappropriating, or if they're misappropriating, because we don't have enough in these resolutions to say that they did it and didn't. Like, enough. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Council President, Mr. Maurice Hall.
Have I been recognized yet?
Council President, Mr. Hall. Just one second, Mr. Hall.
Yes, go right ahead, Ms.
Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Emery Hall, 1911, Smokehouse Barbecue, 11 West Front Street. I have two things. First, I want to thank city council, the city of Trenton Economic Development Department. They helped me greatly with the expansion that we recently completed by enclosing our back patio. Just want everybody in the city to know that the city helped out greatly. They gave us a grant for $175,000 on our quarter of a million build in the back, and the city is open for business. Glad we were able to utilize a grant that was about to expire, so just wanted to publicly thank the city, city council and economic development. My second point is, I have another building on 28 South Warren that I've been trying to renovate, and it's being held up. So I need help. The previous director of the Housing Department was helpful in getting permits moved for the expansion, which took longer than needed. Now I need help for another building. This is something that we're going to pay for ourselves, so there's no grant money involved, but we shouldn't have to jump through a bunch of hoops to invest in the city. If you look at Warren Street and West State Street, there are too many storefronts that are empty, and some of it is due to things not moving within the city and the Building Department. So, any help that I can get would be greatly appreciated, because I'm wasting a lot of money trying to do the right thing and invest in the city. So, any help that could be had would be greatly appreciated. That's 28 South Warren. Thank you.
As anybody else wishes to be recognized by the Trenton City Council. Uh, Council President, we have Ms. Cheryl Snyder.
Go right ahead, Ms. Snyder.
Good evening, Councilwoman, President, and good evening to the rest of the council. I'd just like to make comments on two things. One is our policing in the street. We do need more, maybe not officers, but someone to recognize our citizens out here and know that they are cared for. If not police officers, maybe something like auxiliary police. They don't have a gun. It's the residents of the city walking around, caring for the citizens, and not just protecting the businesses that's downtown. And I think our children need more officers or auxiliary that look like them to know that they're there for them, and police officers are not all bad. So just take consideration into looking at auxiliary police. Another thing, there's a lot of money going out into the city of Trenton to fix certain areas, to fix parks. There's grants going out to businesses. We have a lot of residents that are taxpayers that's been paying taxes on their homes for the longest, that want to stay in their homes, but they need help. They need a little extra help. We have now a grant that's for urgent rehabilitation to somebody's homes, but there's not enough listings on this grant for people to get their, things that they need fixed in their homes. The homes in Trenton are so, so old. It's a $5,000 grant. If this grant was available for people to get certain things fixed in their homes, like, because they're so old, the homes are shifting, so some of the floors are coming away from the walls. Because they're so old, and there's stones. Some of the stones are coming away from the roof, and you have birds nesting in them. So, I hope a lot of the seniors try to fill out these applications to get these grants. And it's like jumping through freaking hoops. These are taxpayers. They want to stay in Trenton. They want to stay in their homes. We shouldn't make it so difficult for them to stay in their homes. I think we should look at the grants that's out there for the residents, help them get the things that they need to fix in their homes, so they can continue to pay their taxes and stay in Trenton. Thank you.
Council President, next we have Kealan, and if you could identify your full name for the record. Kealan, could you identify your full name for the record, please? Unmute yourself, please.
Move on, Mr. Callen, please.
Yes, ma'am. Does anybody else wish to be recognized by the Trenton City Council from public portion? Council President, Mr. Algernon Ward.
Go right ahead, Mr. Ward.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, city council. I've been listening to proceedings for the last hour or so. And I was struck by the comments made by the young woman that was referring to the issues of police reform in the city of Trenton. This is a vital issue to our city for more than one reason. First, that police reform is necessary in order for the police culture to change here in the city of Trenton. In other words, to make them more amenable to the needs of our community. We haven't undertaken serious police reform in the city, which means we've left the status quo in place. And my prediction is, because we haven't changed, the same things will continue, and it will be a constant irritant on police-community relations, and the things will only get worse, and the next incident will set off a tinderbox again, because we haven't taken the steps, serious steps. We've taken rhetorical steps, but not serious steps, to institute a civilian review board with real powers invested in it. This would be the safety valve to prevent the next issue from exploding and further damaging the reputation of Trenton. And not to mention the human toll that it takes when these unfortunate incidents occur. We're talking about people's lives here. So, I think the current tactic is, well, these things are going to blow over, and we'll go back to business as usual. We'll say how terrible the situation is, but we won't do anything, which guarantees to continue. We do have to visit the issue of police training. We have not burdened police with being social workers. Well, that tells me we need more social workers, and that some of the resources that we use in law enforcement actually go to the root of the problem. I'm happy to see that our arrest rate and murders has gone up, and I will give the police chief, I mean director.
Kealan Scott.
Uh, for that. But at the same time, police visibility has gone down. We have not addressed training at all. There is no way to vet community complaints in a fair manner. So, police reform is an issue on the table, and it's not one that we can ignore and think that because things have calmed down for the moment, that we're out of the woods. In fact, our neglect is almost going to guarantee that there'll be other incidents that's going to occur. The second I would like to say, city council's role with people in the community is where the rubber meets the road. And you all are representatives before the city of Trenton, and we rely upon you to bring forth the issues that concern us most. We, city of Trenton is in dire need of redevelopment. I think Ms. Snyder just pointed out some of the housing stock has deteriorated, so we have to be wise in the way we redevelop, but we must redevelop, and with a vision that looks forward to a better quality of life for everybody who lives here. But so, your deliberations are important, and we need to take them seriously, and we cannot approach every question with our own particular axe to grind, but we actually look for a solution and try our best to get there. So, you have a, you have a key role in all of this, because it is the people, after all, that elects you to represent us before all governing entities. So I hope that, you know, people who tune in on this, on the city council meeting are demonstrating that they have an interest in it, and that, you know, their voices be heard and their desires be met by the people we elect to represent us. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Council President, I do have another hand raised. It was an individual that was sort of interrupting Mr. Ward. Do you want me to allow them to speak, ma'am?
Yes, if they are prepared.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is for 201, 406, 2093. Could you please identify yourself?
Hi, it's Kealan Scott.
What's your name, sir?
Kealan Scott.
Thank you. Kealan Scott? Yes, sir. You've been recognized.
Okay, yeah, I was on earlier. For some reason, my computer wasn't allowing me to unmute. Yeah, this is very important. With the guy who he just talked to before about police reform and everything, I have to let everybody be aware of one thing. That is, I'm not a Trenton resident, but I'm a victim of police brutality, and I'm trying to bring awareness that this is the most important issue in this country right now. Police reform, whatever you want to call it, judicial reform, whatever, if you have a country that, if you make a country, or if you make a government that is going to attack its own people, put them in cages or kill them, whether they're black, brown, white, or blue, or in between, the country serves no purpose if its own government officials are attacking them or they are not made safe. This is the most important thing when you're designing a country, a government, a city council, or anything. The most important thing is that our taxes that are being paid are not being used to work against us by physical means, and that means put in cages, which is jail, killed, maimed, or having our constitutional Fourth Amendment rights violated by not having our right to, by violating the rights right to, by violating the rights of seizing our peoples, our persons, our places, or our possessions. And this is a violation of our Fourth Amendment constitutional right and this is a matter that needs to be urgently taken care of. Certain things that need to be taken care of that are actually in the works right now is the George Floyd Act that is on the works that possibly being kicked out by Senator Tim Scott and the chief unions, chief of police unions in the United States of America. I might sound like a no-name person named Kealan Scott, but eventually I hope my voice to be recognized and understood and heard in the future because I have much ideas that should be heard. So right now, we have the George Floyd Act that we all need to urgently listen to and try to get passed, whether it's by calling our president, calling the vice president, who will be in Montclair tomorrow, New Jersey tomorrow between 11:00 and 3:00. Vice President Harris will be there between 11:00 and 3:00 tomorrow in Montclair, New Jersey. We can write in, we can urge whatever it is, urge whoever it is and whomever it is to our Senator Cory Booker or whoever, to make sure this act passes and it's urgently important. Secondly, there is a march that's happening tomorrow from Montclair and going down to Trenton. It's going from Montclair to South Orange, New Jersey, and this is first initially for police reform, such as the T.C.R.A.B. bill that is going to make a civilian review board possible with subpoena power and other legislations that are trying to be passed by we, the people, and by the mayor of Newark, Mayor Rasko, the mayor of Plainfield and other mayors are trying to get this bill passed. But the people in between, certain senators, are trying to block the bill because they're being pushed by unions that are, police unions, it's only interest is of themselves and not of we, the people. This march will be being held from Montclair to South Orange on Saturday, I mean on Friday tomorrow, and going all the way every single day in different towns down to Trenton and will be arriving in Trenton on Saturday. You'll probably be hearing about this on the news. It's being pushed by People's Organization of Progress in Newark, New Jersey by Larry Hamm, who ran for senator last year. I represent the People's Organization of Progress and I highly, highly tell every Trentonian to come to as many days of this march as possible as this march is pushing for civilian review boards, pushing for police reform, what the man was just talking about, also for $15 minimum wage, also for reparations of African-American people, which we do rightly entitle and if there's a person on this call that does not believe so, it is just wrong, wrong, wrong. For reparations, for free college, at least at the community level, which Bernie Sanders had wanted to do. So we need to understand something as people and people in New Jersey. Our liberties are being taken away. Now, with these issues, other issues, these minor detail issues that we have are important. Important issues such as schooling and education, things like that, that if our liberties are not given to us and we, the people, are not put at the priority and the politicians and the police officers are not seen as servants and they are seen as the ones that are the leaders, then we have an issue. When the man was talking about police earlier before, this is an urgent issue. The police in this country are ruling it and are ruling the politicians, the unions, the police unions are ruling everything and it doesn't even have to do with race anymore. What this issue has to do with is the police and the police unions and the judicial system has shown no respect of we, the people. And it doesn't matter if you're black, white, blue, brown, white, or in between and this narrative that is only against African-Americans is false. I repeat, this narrative that the police officers are only an endangerment to black people is false. It is just more endangerment to us proportionately. Two hundred and fifty white people get killed by police officers every single year. I've seen white people beat by police officers under my own eyes, from my own eyes. Wake up people and realize that the police are not your friends. In 2005, it has now been voted that are, that they have no right to serve and protect. Now, I have to say this all the time to get people to understand. That does not mean every single police officer is bad, but the police entity in and of itself is no longer in the interest of the average public. And it might sound harsh, it might sound radical, but we need to get them in check. They're out of control. We all see it on TV, we all see it on the news. This is unacceptable. They have a 2% success rate of solving crimes and they have a very poor success, we have a very poor success rate of holding them accountable, which is why everybody celebrated when George Floyd died. And what this man said before is that we can't just celebrate and think that it's good that we got one locked away that was bad. Every single individual, whether a police officer, politician, prosecutor, or whatever, if you violate the person's constitutional rights or their personal freedoms, which is not to die, which is ridiculous, not to be killed, we all know what's right and what's wrong. What we saw in May, Memorial Day 2020 was murder and we still see it constantly all the time. I myself was chased by police officers and my wife was grabbed and we were both beaten by police officers while our brother's body was still there dead and they didn't care about the fact that we were grieving and we did absolutely nothing and unprovoked nothing for the officers to grab and take our liberties away from us and we still are dealing with this day. So yes, I represent the victims of police brutality and no, I'm not saying this just because I have PTSD and I'm upset. We see it on TV and we need to urge this. But if the council people listening right now or the 50 to 80 other Trentonians that are listening, I urge you to show up tomorrow or I urge you to any other day, keep track of it. My number is 201-406-2093. You can call me at any time and I'll tell you anything you need to do to take care of this urgent issue. No, I am not a crazy person just has PTSD that is trying to deal with police. We see it on TV constantly all the time. I'm still dealing with this stuff to this day, three years later, in 2018, August 2nd in the morning between 11:00, 11:55 a.m. You can look me up for Kealan Scott at Facebook if you want to know. This is a problem and you know it and we all know it and we need to stop it.
Just a second, sir.
That's all. I'm done.
Uh, Council President Tracy Slat.
Right ahead. 7:40 West State Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Just want to speak on the last order of the redevelopment that was, that didn't pass. But I just want to remind council that we work for the citizens, you work for the citizens of this city. And as someone who has developed properly here in 27 years, I'm interested of why you guys need to see this. Was just shown the $9,000 lot on Vine Street. Vine Street, really? A homeowner, someone who lives next to that lot, buying that lot for $9,000 and we couldn't even get that passed? I mean, you guys were elected to do the city's business. Developer, people that are looking to come here to the city, business people, they are afraid of you guys. They are afraid of you guys and they have every right to be afraid because you guys, week after week, come to council every single week and it's always argument, it's never about moving this city in the right direction. Just to vote down something because you got a personal agenda is not going to help this city, it's not going to help the citizen. And I just want to say one thing, and I, as a businessman in the city, as a businessman, when I looked at that cannabis vote the last time, how we would just get ready to just say, forget about doing anything in this arena for five years, being locked out for five years, when we look at all the shit that's happening, Robin, in your ward, I mean, are we really going to do that and pass that opportunity to bring dollars here to the same community that's been impacted by the war on drugs? Your ward, the west ward mainly? I mean, we have to do a better job. Listen, we work, we have to do a better job of representing just the citizens. Citizens who have been here, who have suffered, the people that are looking to come here. Let's work for them. I'm just asking you, business person, this is not looking good. This is not looking good at all, council. You guys need to do a better job. Someone who has paid tax, lives here, loves this city dearly, I'm just asking you to do a better job, just moving this city forward. Whatever allegations and investigation, they're going to play out. How about we just continue to move this city forward? I was on the call Tuesday, I heard people talking about we're just not going to vote on any resolutions? So we're just going to shut the city down because of these allegations? Makes no sense at all. All right, poor council, just to work together, let's work together to move our city forward. We have been stuck in a rut for decades now, decades. And we will continue to be stuck in a rut as long as we keep on operating the way we're operating. Just asking the city council, let's work together. That's all, let's work together. That's it for me. Bye.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, is anybody else? They're motion to close public portion.
Yes, so moved.
I'm motion to close. President, civic comment.
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn? Yes, I concur with everyone about the police issue and police department reform. The amount of money that we spend on our police department here in Trenton and it mirrors the same around every city around the country. Our police department needs to do better and we as a city need to work and demand better and expect better and we have to hold all our neighbors accountable. This city is not just governed by the city council. This city is governed under the form of government called the Faulkner Act. And the Faulkner Act is an act that is a mayor council form of government. That means the mayor and council are of equal powers, equal powers, although different but equal. Both entities serve as checks and balances to one another. There are people in this city who think that the mayor can't be accountable for anything and this is why nothing is getting done. The way you come to this council and demand results, you should do the same for the mayor. And before you come to council and make your demands, and I say this to everyone, you should learn how government works at every level. Your local level, which is extremely, local government, city government, township government, your county government, your state government, and your federal. Now, your council ain't the end-all, be-all. The mayor is the executive. He has a tremendous responsibility. He feeds, he is the executive. He is supposed to be out there bringing business to the city, engaging in contract legally, not in violation of the law, in a fair, in equitable way. Getting business into the city that benefits all the citizens, not just the select few. We see, I've been on this council for only three years. Can I look at that docket? It's the same old vendors, same old contract. And we ask why the city is not growing. So you have no credibility when you come to this council and say, oh, you know, we all need to work together. Well, who are we working for? We have 84,000 citizens in this city. Who are we working for? You, yourself? There is, the equity in this city is a huge imbalance. The fairness, access, access. Let's talk about access. Who gets access to the council? Who gets access to the mayor? Who gets access to the housing economic development department? Who gets access to the grant funding to fix their homes, the CDBG grant money? Who gets access? Who's on that list time and time again? You got to raise the flag and say, you know, it's the same organization, same individuals, same contractors are getting money. You call that the select few and that's not by happenstance. That's called corruption. Corruption is live and well and greedy and trite. That's why we haven't gone anywhere for the past 10 years and we're not going to go anything. We aren't going to go forward in the next 10 years if we don't clean up our act here. And we got to clean out the mayor's office, we got to clean out every single office in this city. Public Works, Water Works, all of, all our utilities are in debt. None of them, they're all supposed to be self-liquidated. They're all supposed to be generating surplus, your parking utility, your sewer utility, your water utility, it's supposed to be generating revenues that help with redevelopment in your city, that help with job creation. Your public works department should be employing many of its citizens. Your water works department should be employing, if you have a water utility, most, Trenton is blessed to have a public water utility. Your public water utility is a mechanism for job creations for your municipality. That's the benefit we get. So what do we do? What has our mayor done? He has given those jobs to outsiders, not to Trentonians. You don't believe me? Go down and talk to a few of the city workers. Public Works Department, Parking Authority, Parking Authority has not done a, an impactful and meaningful redevelopment project, nothing that has done a major, that has put a major footprint in the city of Trenton. Parking Authority, I mean, you go to New Brunswick, you go to, you know, Philadelphia, New York, Jersey City, their parking authorities are doing terrific projects, bringing revenue to the city. So what we get in redevelopment contracts from our mayor? Little from his friends, companies, Prince Tell and this, other little companies that are not going to come with huge benefit for 84,000 citizens. So that's what we're talking about here. So if you are talking about a transformative government change in Trenton, stop with this status quo crap. Doing the same way that you've been doing business for the past 10, 30 years and think things are going to change, they're going to get better. People are dying in the streets because we had, they have no economic opportunity. They're disenfranchised, they're marginalized. They don't even know what the inside of hall of City Hall looks like. They don't even know who Mayor Gussior is. Mayor Gussior only talks to certain people in the city of Trenton. People are getting killed because they have no jobs, they have no access. Stop playing with me. You come here, you talk sense, okay? Look at things realistically. Look at your streets. It's deteriorating. So all I will say to you, the abuse of public office for personal gain erodes people's trust in government. Half of the citizens, more than half of the citizens don't have a trust in City Hall. They can't even get a CDBG grant, the $5,000 grant money. Walk in any neighborhood and ask any citizen, did they get any of that money? The answer is no. They call me all the time. Robin, I went down here and get application and everybody in that office is adversarial to Trenton residents. They don't even give them instructions. They don't even give them an application. They even deny them an application. And I get a list and it's the same old people who get the grant money, who are not, you know, really in need, who don't really even meet the criteria. So people's trust in government in Trenton is zilch and the mayor is not doing anything about it. It makes public policies less effective and fair. Fairness in the city of Trenton, that's what I'm talking about, fairness. Recycling our taxpayer dollars, money away from crime? We're giving millions of dollars in overtime in the police department and people can't see them on the street. My neighbor, I came out of my house, out of my driveway and my neighbor's across the street, son and his friend were being pushed up on, up against their truck. And they went to sitting out in front of their parents' house and the Trent police came down the street and pulled them out of their cars and patted them down in front of their parents' house. I walked over and I said, Councilwoman Vaughn, what is going on over here? These people live here. That's Albert's mom's, that's his house. But, and Albert responded, but he said, Councilwoman Vaughn, but they're not down there trying to find those shooters. Hmm, but they want to ride around Hillcrest and pat down people who are just sitting in front of their house. But they're not solving the crimes.
Just a second.
Strategic plans, we haven't got, the council hasn't got any strategic plans from this police director on how to stop these shootings. So all I want to say is... So all I want to say is, this city has been embattled in corruption. We got to change that. Until, if we're going to continue to be in denial about that, we want to say that we want only to give the select few the benefit and the opportunity, we will, and particularly, we will continue to die, and majority of people who are dying in this city are African-American, are black people that look like me. So I will continue to fight for access, equity, and equality to this government, in this government. So, Council President, I will turn it over to you, and it is definitely corruption. Corruption benefits no one. We all, our economy will thrive when everybody benefits, when everybody benefits. Everybody has a good school to go to, everybody has a good job, everybody has health care. Until that happens, we will continue to see what we see in Trenton. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Rodriguez?
I have no comments.
Councilman, you shall.
I'd just like to make a statement that for the Roe v. Compton area, I think we received letters on that, let's try to move that forward so that we can.
Can't hear you.
We're getting a lot of feedbacks here.
I can't hear a word Mr. Michelle is saying.
We, we, we can't hear you, and I'm not sure why. Um, I don't know if there's any way to move your microphone, or, uh, Council President, if you want him to call in, maybe you can call in and go next.
It's in and out, I'm councilman.
About now?
Better.
It's back out again, George.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, do you want to call in, and the Council President can come back to you?
Negative.
All right, sir.
Councilman Harrison?
Um, first, I, I think what Mr. Michelle was trying to talk about was a Roe v. too. There's offers on that, I think we'd like to move forward on that. Um, secondly, Mr. Cruz, are you on the, are you still on the phone? Mr. Cruz?
Uh, Madam President, can I speak?
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, Council, I, I am here. Cruz, I, I would, okay, I would like to publicly apologize for that comment on Tuesday. I think it's so inappropriate, this is not the first time that that comment was made towards you, and I think it's appalling and disrespectful, and it's racist, that's what it is. It's disgusting that any of my colleagues continually do this, and those kind of comments should not be out ever in public. The comment made to you made me sick to my stomach, and I, like I said, I want to publicly apologize to you, because like other people have said, this council has been a problem. We need to do redevelopment, we need to move the city forward. We, we had $9,000 tonight on air for a lot that the person now would be in hold, hold of, they would pay taxes on it, and if they put garbage or whatever on that lot, we could have the inspectors out there. But now that it's still a city-owned lot, we have to clean it, and we don't know who's illegally might be dumping on that lot. So, um, also, I would like to say, there was a, a community meeting at the Bellevue-Rutherford Rehabilitation Redevelopment Community-wide Meeting on September 21st. The councilwoman from the west's name is on this, and it's kind of sad that it's her ward, and she didn't even show up for that meeting. So at the end of the day, we keep attacking the mayor, but maybe, you know what? When, when the people in our own community reach out to us, maybe we're all going to show up to a meeting regarding things that are going on in our community. But I gotta say it again, Mr. Cruz, I apologize for my heart. That's unacceptable, and it should never be allowed on this council. Thank you.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wolson?
No comments at this time.
No comment, no comment.
Thank you. So tonight, I thank everyone for coming out. Um, your opinion matters. I thank everyone for giving us your input, and I thank all the directors for coming to this call. Um, thank you, Mr. Collin, and again, have a blessed weekend, and I look forward to seeing you in the upcoming week. Thank you, Mr. Collin. Um, we may move before, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I motion to adjourn by Council President Frogger. Have a second?
Second.
Second. Or Miss Caldwell-Wolson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, we are adjourned at 8:06 PM. Uh, Seahawks versus the Rams tonight. Everybody have a great night.
Go Seahawks!
Thank you.
I'm ready.